But that's why you can further the neighbor.
When people see that is like.
Just don't wanna be in a hurry today. Top of page four. Where will the three will start? So that you guys can get back to business. Highway department. Salaries, compensation.
No, we left out the same last year. But you, just to review, you guys remember the first column is what we budgeted, second column is what we actually spent. A third column is what Fred and I like to call our wish list. So we left the salaries the same, we got plenty of room in there. And then you go down to the benefits.
Does that reflect the third guy?
Yes, it does.
So it appears that we've got.
See if I can get it, if not, skip it.
Thirty thousand for play with salaries, so.
And then the benefits are, we left the benefits the same, the health insurance reflects the third guy as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Days are up, we talked about that January nineteenth or something like that. And then we're down to fuel.
Is that thirty-five, you think will be enough?
Hopefully.
Okay.
Depends, you know, fuel price.
I understand that. I didn't know if you guys have your finger on that.
Well, depending on, depending on the year.
Denise, do you have an extra copy of that? By any chance, an extra copy of that?
Did go up some.
Yeah, just show them where we're at, you know, so they can understand what's going on, I don't do that. I've never done this.
Should be.
Okay.
Should be. Thank you. Hopefully.
So we're down into repairs and maintenance of vehicles and equipment. So the, um, we just went down to greater. Be a doctor too, that.
Everything warm teeth.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it should break down. I didn't, I didn't know if cutting edges and.
That's usually on the plow.
The cutting edges.
That goes with thousands.
That should be on the plow anyway.
Okay.
But that's a good, it's three grand for a new boy, for more.
Okay.
But it should be good for another summer anyway.
You gotta get up a new one on this year, usually about three years.
Okay. So files and sanders, we spent sixteen.
Yeah, could we bought that new hopper?
Okay. Yeah.
Or you could take by eight, oh, ten out there.
Yep.
Yeah, but we added it because we were gonna buy some though. We left it at twelve.
Yeah, maybe you might want to think about a new file.
Like the one on the O-six is a handy down.
Either I get it rebuilt.
What truck did that come off from?
Well, it could be used on any of them.
The, the one on the O-six is, it's an old Tinko file, it's old.
It probably came with old, probably the O-six. Cause usually when you get a new truck, we're getting a file.
Okay.
So we just figured maybe he might want a new file eventually.
That's if we don't trade no trucks, which we got the new sander, so we weren't thinking of trading nothing for a truck.
On the screener, did you buy a motor for it?
I didn't because I, I was looking for a patch, you know, can't find a patch. I've checked all of it, you know, the old screen or whatever not, you can't find that cover there. And you, you know, you couldn't find it.
Right. Well, I couldn't find it new, so.
Right, right. Right here, you saw that, there's a motor, you know, it probably be putting a motor on it. So anyway, figuring that would be, it'd be two thousand dollars.
Yep.
For that.
Okay.
The rest of the screener is pretty good?
Yeah, and you gotta put.
Oh, yeah.
The coils are two hundred bucks, and then you gotta put, and then the coil the back, then you gotta put a cover there and that's another five, six hundred bucks, so you're better off to bring a motor. And the screener, we've got three packs and a quick chain and everything.
Didn't you do some welding on that?
Yeah, we put a new bottom in it.
Oh, that's, that's what it was, okay, yeah.
They bought it four times, had a lot of stuff to it.
I've seen a lot of those portable screeners when I was looking on Craigslist, you know, and price wise and all, that awful bad. I mean, I know they're showing second hand, but they look new. And I was screening about how well it worked for you guys.
We want to figure.
Yeah.
I don't know, are they gonna move it, you know?
Well, they, they say the ones with the stacker like ours is a lot better because.
Yeah, I mean, oh, yeah, definitely. You still gotta move it at some point.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So, but.
It would be nice, I always thought it'd be, be nice.
But ours still works good, we can make.
Yeah, I mean, if it works good and everything's there, it's the motors.
We're not actually gonna use it much this year.
Yeah, and the guy I called on parts to the engine or the street, he's the one that said that, you know, it's now obsolete that motor, but they had a kit to convert it over with a Honda engine.
Yeah.
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 And that been, that been revealed, had been revealed three, four times, Gilly did it once and your dad did it two, three.
We've had that quite a, quite a few years, yeah, not a good rate for us.
Still be about the fifth.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, the pickup, we didn't put anything in there because didn't know if you guys were gonna talk about trading it or repairing it or what. So we gotta.
That topic's still up for discussion, so.
So what do you wanna put in there? Do you guys want to?
I have no idea.
That's why we left it at zero.
We went and got fixed and everything and then.
So actually on the pickup, all you spent is a hundred and eighteen mil and sixty cents?
No, we bought tires.
No, twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred and thirty-three, eighty-three.
You're down one mile.
Yeah, oh, different pickup, I guess, okay.
I bought tires and I bought, well, I had to get inspected or whatever. New windshield.
Oh, yeah, that's it, yeah.
Yeah, hasn't been a bad truck.
No, it's been a good truck.
No, that's not a lot of money in a truck for.
No.
But we use it for a whole year.
GMC, right? It just broke in.
I think.
And rusted out.
I think we should put a thousand in there.
Yeah, just in case, something, you know.
Cause if we do trade, it's gonna come with all season tires on it, and you're gonna wanna set a four brand in winter, so.
Yeah, and a thousand bucks is nothing when you start talking today's prices and repairing something.
The black truck, we don't have.
Oh, that's gone?
Yeah, that's just gone.
Down to the mower.
Yeah, we didn't know.
We got ten grand, we only spent thirty-three hundred.
I think that we jumped it to ten grand because of the joystick.
We talked about fixing it, we talked about trading it, and we talked about a leash and one, but nothing happened.
The joystick, there's a button that's junk on it, so in order to access that function, we jumped the solenoids on the valve and push the button to where you want it, and then you go back and jump it, cause there's one button you don't use a whole lot. But if we were to replace that, they said it's a lot of money, that's why I think we put that big number in case, so.
Okay, that doesn't affect the safety of using it though, right?
No, once you shut the rotation off before you get out.
That's, that's, yes, okay.
We were talking about trading that too, but.
Right, you know, you know, we, we talked a lot.
But at the time, we bought the grater, so.
Oh, yeah.
So Osha doesn't know about the.
Well, it's fine.
It's just mechanical, you know.
Yeah, I wouldn't imagine Osha would like them things, period.
No, that's true.
Yeah.
I don't think that would be an issue.
But it wouldn't be no different, you're too great not liking it, you do.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Well, we'll get the money there, we decide to fix it, so. Okay. I don't have any questions on any of the other one, either of you guys?
No, no, I think we're in good shape for the shape we're in.
Depreciation on the equipment, fifty-one eight, so. It's all being used.
Yeah.
Yep.
Contracted services.
The town's mowing doesn't come out of there, right, is that a different town?
We do it ourselves.
That's different, yeah. I, I meant, uh.
No, that's different.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Mowing the lawn out front here and, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and the bridge maintenance, we got nothing in there, cause that was the, that big culvert, so we got a lot.
We got anymore we're looking at?
Yes.
We'll go there later, we'll go there later, then we'll check all these lead box.
Right.
Maybe something will come up.
Because remember this amount here, we were gonna change at one point. That's a, that's thirty inch, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, thirty inches, thirty-six maybe.
Yeah, so that, don't that classify for.
It may, that's.
Good or state with bridge?
We didn't.
I thought it was after thirty or thirty-six, they're at thirty-six.
I thought we just didn't.
Well, we, if we have to, we do, but a lot of times if they got money, they jump in on it.
Anything two feet or up.
But then I dropped it, I thought to thirty or thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Yeah.
Anything over.
Put bridges over that, anything?
They call that a bridge.
Yeah.
Really?
Yep.
Once it gets to a certain size, they, they almost classify it as a bridge, which I never understood myself.
They must have a guardrail over the top.
Uh?
You must have a guardrail over the top.
Not always, if you go out long enough, you don't, if there's no real deep.
So I did have one on number twelve, loved every buck, so we didn't put no guardrails, but they, they keep trying to.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they gotta come and inspect you and then.
Oh, yeah.
They should have, they held us up for six months, and it was at all, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, that's a, that's a typical because.
Did you find out on the permit for working on our roads?
I haven't, because she hasn't been back.
Twenty-six hundred dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I don't care what they're doing.
They're doing it, they're paying them?
Cause I, I don't believe that we have even gone out looking or initiated that permit yet.
No, we didn't go there lady, you know, go around, and whatever we're employing.
So you're talking two different things.
That was something that came from Shane.
Yeah.
Shane said the state of Vermont wants all towns, or the email said that all towns needed to apply for a permit.
Yeah.
To work on their roads.
Work on our own roads.
And then we can.
Right, I agree.
But it depends on.
We never did hear back.
You're looking at it from a revenue side, and you're on the legislature, it makes a lot of sense.
Yes, yeah.
Doesn't make any sense to the town. It's not gonna stop us from following the roads.
No, we're changing the code, you're gonna back code.
Right, so. But we didn't put that money in anywhere, right?
No.
I'm wondering if we should do that. Well, it could be in there under contracted services, maybe? We got eleven thousand in there, and we calculated for twenty, so that would cover it there. So if you.
We, we, we didn't want to put anything in for the bridge or culvert?
No, that.
Maintenance?
That was a line I had set because of, we had a big time.
Right, no, I understand that, but Fred, we were talking about doing other ones, that I didn't know.
Should, yeah, I, I gotta kinda agree, maybe we should put three thousand in, like we did before. That's ten percent.
Should put something in there, I would think.
So that way, if something comes up, we've got.
Yes.
We've got our share.
Right.
Oh, cause we might.
Cause as a rule, that one up there was thirty thousand, and that's one of the bigger ones that we do, sorry.
Fred, are you?
But that's one of the bigger ones that we do, that three thousand isn't a lot of money.
You've got one down there by Chris Hammond, that down there on the block, someday that's gonna be changed, only there's a big old fuel tank in there, been good for years.
Yeah, and, and we're.
And it's there, whatever, it should be done eventually.
Think we better be safe than sorry.
I think we should have some money in there.
Okay, so some grants out there will have our share.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, what do you guys wanna put in there?
I'd say three thousand, like we had.
Okay.
Before.
Okay.
Yeah.
That twenty-six forty on that permit says it's due July thirty-first, twenty-eighteen, in that email.
Oh, oh, from Shane?
It was from Doug Moran.
Yeah, originally, through Shane, sent to us, through Shane.
I got it from Doug Moran, fuck.
How much is it, Mike?
Is it?
Twenty-six forty, four hundred dollar application fee, two hundred and forty dollar administrative processing fee, two thousand dollar annual operating fee.
But what's it for?
MRGP.
And that means?
It doesn't say. You, you, I got, that's.
Yeah, I understand.
I forwarded to you.
Maintenance, roads.
I got it directly from Doug, and you had responded back as, what's this, it basically.
Why are we paying twenty-six hundred dollars to work on our own roads, it doesn't make sense.
But it says it is due, we don't even say who it's payable to.
Well, probably they're gonna have somebody come around, tell us what we can do, what we can't do, and they gotta get paid somewhere else.
Oh, the MRGP is municipal roads general permit. Oh, my God.
Oh, cause their new year starts in July.
Yeah.
I guess until I.
Find out. Thirty-first of July.
This year.
This year.
I guess until I found out what that money goes to and for what reason I'm not willing to pay it myself.
They can shut us down.
Yeah.
Seven, four, eight, twelve, twenty-one is his whole number.
You're gonna come over here and give us whatever.
One, two, two, one.
Thank you.
That's.
I'm gonna give him a call, I, I like talking to those boys.
Doug's a pretty friendly fellow anyways from.
At least I can find out what committee it came out of. Yeah, I can go from there, I like that. All right. Um, anything else under contracted services?
I'm just throwing this out, maybe we oughta bump up street sweeping, you know, there was a discussion about plowing, sweeping, whatever, down here at some point.
Oh, on the sidewalk?
Yeah, on Main Street.
In front of the.
The state isn't gonna do it. Yeah. Are we gonna have to, you know, and if we do, our guy, I know he has the signs and he has everything to do with, but he'll probably have to, you know, he's gonna up his price, so, I don't know.
You mean like the, the same one that most lawn stores?
No, no, it's a different guy that probably sweeps the streets.
He must be hourly anyways, Amy.
No.
No, he gives me a price every year.
He gives a price, yeah.
They probably already doubled that.
I'm thinking we probably, I mean, I'm not saying we're gonna do it, but it's just.
Well, you're gonna have to eventually.
If we want it done, we're gonna have to pay for it, cause the state isn't gonna do it.
If you don't do it, you're gonna grow grass.
And the school's not gonna do it.
So why don't we just step up to play budget for it and start?
At least clean the streets.
I mean, we're looking at the safety for the kids, right?
Right.
That's what it is, so I, I think we should step up and do it.
But would it be, it wouldn't be double, that's not that one.
No, it's not that big of a.
Yeah, but we got the whole life of town to do.
Oh, you mean street that?
I'm talking all the, the main, the main road.
Yeah, you go all the way over there.
Okay, so you wanna double that?
Either that, or we go out and buy a tractor and a plow and a sander that can do it.
Yeah.
Well, we're not gonna plow yet, we're just cleaning the streets.
Well, yeah, I know, but it's coming, right?
You'll get a price from him?
I will.
To, to do the sidewalk?
Yeah.
And then we'll just, we'll double this to twenty-six hundred.
Twenty-six hundred?
Well, it's not only the sidewalk, it's the curb along the road too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everything there.
Right.
That should cover it, you think, Brad?
Well, yeah.
I think it should.
Cause he doing all these streets, the whole thing, you know, it's.
Even goes over the hill and doesn't.
Yeah, he goes down the other side and just.
There's a couple of those, yeah, side roads over there.
Doesn't he just sweep it to the side?
No, he turned it bucket.
Oh, he don't? Yeah, I thought he just swept it to, put a sweeper on there, swept it to the side. I love seeing him come when it's dry.
I never wash the windows here till after, he shows up.
My goodness.
I didn't even wash any clothes, I hang them on the line, I, I can't believe that.
You see him get out of this kids' year, you see him wipe his eyes.
Yeah.
Think of what his lungs look like.
All right, under materials and supplies. We overspent big time in paving, what do you have for paving project?
Well, we overspent because.
No, I know, that's right, we overspent that paving line item.
Yeah, little bit.
Right, because we did Vance Hill, where we weren't even supposed to do that, because the state had the money for it.
Right. What about culvert plate, you?
I've got four, five, then we change.
But that enough money in Nasek, that'll, I know last year we did a few more than usual.
I did more usual, cause it kept going, and it kept getting.
Right.
Well, last year, didn't we have most of the culverts left over from the year before?
I think, yeah, I think you said, yeah.
We had had a bunch of them, so the crossroad all pre-purchased.
Yeah. Well, we, we had to do those because we were gonna tire it.
Yeah, but we had, we had all the culverts, and then we still spent sixty-eight hundred dollars and.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
But we changed some here that.
Oh, yeah, I fixed one too, you know.
Yeah.
That's forced.
Right, yeah, these weren't on the list, because we weren't gonna tire it, and then.
But you think that's enough in there, sick though, for next year?
Cause you got one again, you got two, they all live there. They had it pretty fast.
But those are on dirt roads and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Payment, so. So, you think ten?
Yeah.
I mean, if that's what we need to do, I mean, we gotta change them.
Yeah. They don't throw them in the plastic.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I know it's just collapsing, it'll, don't buy plastic in them.
You can take care of them on Halloween. Light a tire, throw it in the middle.
Then we gotta be, be, be whole.
It's easier than that.
What?
It's easier than that.
Or some fuel.
Gasoline or fuel.
Just light it.
I'm enjoying it. It's gonna burn.
You get it laying in there, and you get it burning, and all of a sudden it gets your plastic burning.
I think milk.
Kid, kid, well, kids out west, well, you gotta get the fuel to go down the length of it, so if it won't go through, no, it ain't gonna work.
Get a hand phone, just screw it.
No, out west, I guess that's what the kids do, they pour fuel down them and light them, and all of a sudden.
Using.
Culvert's gone.
State, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
Bunch of pyromaniacs here.
I think they've probably gone to gray now, but gray's better. Them black one didn't look good.
I know, they, we used to do a lot of liners.
Okay, so we're gonna up that to ten? Yeah, okay.
The paving, I don't really wanna do that. Could we, uh, the road we got left and all that, two, four, money when like comes around.
Yeah.
You know.
Can we, can we wait?
They don't wanna get the crossroads, you know, we changed a little culvert, but they're, they're pretty good right now.
They're good, I think we're good for another year, anyway.
But for what, paving? I mean, we're not gonna get anything next year.
No.
We got it this year.
Right, yeah, I, I didn't think we were gonna get anything next year.
And we basically got a year early, if we weren't able to get it.
Yes.
You'd serve those down, you know, there's not, not too much money there, and we, we get over there, and city fire was good, so we got, roughly, from lead build to the city line, but that's not that.
Have you thought of any project, anything?
No, I.
Lawson Street could use some pavement.
Yeah.
Well, let's leave that amount in there and see what happens.
We're not, sure, we're running down the middle.
You know?
Yeah, I, Lawson Street wouldn't take, a lot, I wouldn't think.
The only thing down there is at some point, we wanna change that water line.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't wanna pave it and then have to change the water line, you know? I don't mind doing a little patch job down there to get.
It's just that.
Just say it.
But the water line don't, sorry.
I understand that, but you know and I know what happens, we always, somewhere somebody digs into it or something happens.
Never fails. I was just throwing that up.
Yes, no, and I wholeheartedly agree, but I just say.
Man, I don't wanna put any funding in there for not gonna do anything, but if we are gonna do the Lawson Street, then we probably definitely need to fix the water line or replace the water line before we pave it.
I think we usually put that amount every year and having, something always comes up, seems to. You know?
We're using it somewhere.
We're definitely, we definitely have something.
Well, the question, what needs paving, what we could do is roads that we get state aid for, you know, so that's why we didn't, wouldn't really want. There's roads that could be done, but would, would rather wait till a year when we get.
Right.
State money.
Right, but, but we still need like Lawson Street, or like this street, or like this street, we don't get it.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
And Searls Road, we don't get it.
No.
No.
That was that much.
But we've done that, so.
And Collins Mill, we don't get it either, so.
Even if we cut that back to a hundred thousand, if we did Lawson Street, it'd probably be more than enough.
Yeah, it'd be plenty.
So what if we cut it back to a hundred, if we decide to do that come spring?
Yeah.
Is that?
No, that is, that is a short, short stretch.
I would think that street would take a whole.
A long thirty, thirty-five thousand, we'll be.
Okay, well, minus sixty out of that.
And then if something happens on one of these other shore ones, we might be able to.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, wandering, you're digging up the street.
Gravel and crushing?
Crushing, we left in there for gravel, but. We should keep, keep up doing what we're doing.
Okay, we got any guardrail repair we need to do anywhere?
They're done this year. Now we do, another steep thing here, did please hold up and say the guy who hit the ground real, he might wanna get a fix. We'll get the money out our guy, now I get a lot of it, state attorney, who that?
State's attorney.
State attorney, and they wanna just know your history.
Well, they, they're, they're going after the person.
Yeah, and he didn't go over his court trial the last time, so they're gonna go and arrest him, so.
He's probably on the hook to pay us, and he probably never will.
No.
Well.
Seven hundred something.
You know how that works.
Well, I, well, I do know how it works, because I've done it before, um, if, if somebody runs into our guardrails, we go after the insurance company and bill them for it, we, all we gotta do is contact the, uh, the person that's investigating that accident and ask who the insurance carrier is, and bill them. Because if, if, if they say the guy has no insurance, then we go after the person individually, but if they, if they have insurance, they have insurance for that, so we go after that.
We have to do something.
Yeah.
So it kinda sounded like must be, you didn't have insurance.
They wanted to go after him.
Yeah, cause we got a letter from the victim's advocate.
Right, right.
So I was assuming he didn't have insurance.
Not necessarily true, I mean, if we, if, if, if there was an accident, we should be contacting the state police, sheriff's department, whoever did the investigation and ask.
Police report and it'll tell everything on that. I used to get them all the time.
State police are the one that called me, Charlie.
Right, right. I mean, we can go after the, uh, the report through Montpelier, after through motor vehicle.
Yeah.
Well, I'm dealing with that. That, that Amanda lady, she's asked for a pile of paperwork.
Yeah, it's, but seven hundred fifty bucks and I insured it to a thousand deductible.
Because the vic- victim's advocate was asking for our insurance claim, like we put it through our insurance.
Right.
When we didn't.
But they should have a, uh, we should be able to get a police report and it'll tell our mayor what's what.
Yes.
Well, I gotta call her today so I can ask her if you had insurance.
Used to be.
Yes, that's, that's your job.
Every time they did a report, it was sent to me on my desk up there, sent to us and I guess we could request that and it can happen to the state, they'll send it to you.
Right on the bottom, they have their insurance and we just bill the insurance.
Yeah, we didn't get any of that.
Yeah, well, you gotta request it, you, they're not gonna just send it, yeah.
Yeah, I think we probably have to because it's so, it's not very often that it happens.
Right. In the city, it happened all the time, yeah, so. Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had the zero for guardrails.
Yeah, okay, okay. And gravel and crushing, we discussed that already. Material purchase.
We had to buy ledge or whatever.
Awesome.
And if we do any ditching this year, we're gonna put ledge.
That permit process.
Yeah.
Getting more complicated.
Yeah.
Kinda get worse.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have a permit here looking forward to that. Salt, we're all set with that?
I may need by one more over here.
Well, we should've got another load on last year's budget, but we didn't.
Didn't have none.
You had another forty-five hundred dollars that we didn't spend because we missed it.
Well, yeah, until we didn't have no money.
Well, we, we left forty-five hundred dollars on the table last year, that would've bought another load.
So fourteen's good?
Good chain.
Fourteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good, that's what he said.
Same as it was, salt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sand, I'm assuming we don't?
We don't do none.
Okay.
Um, you know, there's a different kind of salt the state puts in. Treated salt, you know anything about that?
Nope.
What kind of salt?
Treated with calcium or something. I think it's, I've heard about it, I, we've never, all we've ever got was salt.
Something new.
They say it's green, it, you can tell it's treated. I heard Jay was using it, I was, been meaning to ask you, I had.
Years ago, we used to get salt, it was blue, yellow and white. And all it was, was a dye, so you could see it better. And that's all that I can tell you, I remember.
The salt delivery guy and he said they got a lane clear or something, it's called something else that he said a lot of places use. Well, it's treated, so it's gonna work at a colder temperature.
It's got calcium on it and the state, I can't believe is buying it because they spray it with calcium when they put it on.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what.
Well, their, their salt looks way in their trucks.
That's all those tanks on the side of those trucks is the calcium that they put on now to spray onto that to make it work.
I, I, I heard Doug talk about it a few years ago, when he was been at the garage, when he still worked for the state and he called it something or other and. I don't, I just figured I'd ask.
Yeah, no, we used to, when I first started for the state, we used to have blue salt, that was a big thing and it was nice cause you could see it.
Yeah.
Especially coming out, you know, yeah.
Well, when you're talking to Shane sometime, I'm asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Doug, I remember saying it went a whole lot more difference in price per ton, a couple bucks and we might try it.
Maybe worth looking at.
If the price is reasonable.
Not a problem. How many gallons of chlorine you got in the tank? Full? Okay.
Get two days.
So that, plenty?
No. Money, it should be.
The money is fine, I just, that's why I was asking.
I could've filled them in a fall, that way I've got enough to go get tired in the spring.
Okay.
Once it starts, everybody starts and we can get it.
Okay. No drilling and blasting?
We're doing that.
Oh, that's true.
We'd like to do it, but can't really think of something that needs blowing up.
Yeah, I think it's bothering us.
So we're, we're, we're happy with the materials and supplies? The corrections? Down to town garage? Tools and inventory? Radios, telephone internet? Advertising? We spent four hundred and twenty-five, oh, must've been for ads for employee.
But some of that, probably, uh, when we close the road, you know, we, uh, I'm tired, we closing the road.
Okay. I didn't know if you were.
You'd think that come under public service and be free.
Well, we put it on the radio, I probably don't cost, I don't know.
No, just the newspapers.
I don't know how you do it.
Cool.
But it gives us a break, people ain't driving up there. Can't get by, critical play call.
Yeah, we found out the radios work well.
The new radios work good?
Fred had a portable one that worked, he was way down on a bussel.
Nice.
They're not as, as good, but they work.
Some days all you hear is scratching, you know, if somebody wants to talk to me, I better call them.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's holes, you know?
Yeah, and it's getting worse and worse.
At least if I ever spent twenty thousand dollars on radios and they do the same thing, so.
There's so much going through the air now, it's a wonder there isn't more.
Everybody's low band now instead of high band, so it's like garbage.
So how are we with town, town garage?
Need a little work around the doors.
I didn't have any problem with any of the line items, so.
Well, you put in, you wanted some money for the door for the salt shed, is that one of them was up there, right?
Yeah, we left it at five thousand.
Which door you talking about, Fred?
The salt shed door. Keep the moisture out, rain out.
Yeah, yeah.
Snow out. Thought it might be a good idea, I know who you're pulling on here, I don't know, and I have to talk with him and see.
They're gonna be powered or?
It should be, it don't have to be.
Oh, I'm just curious.
It's gonna have to be, it can't get in there.
Yeah.
Go and open it.
So what happens when the power goes out and we need sand, uh, salt?
Do you like to do at home, you just pull the string?
You can get in it.
You can, you gotta be able to get in first to pull the string.
You can back into it.
I think who's there, he might be a.
Well, you can put a door like the rest of our doors out right there, they're not powered.
I think there is.
Yes, the rest of our doors are like that out there, you just, they got a lock on them, you turn the handle.
Yeah, you can push it out, yeah.
But I would keep all the water shut, we get drunk from tomorrow and you put the salt down there, don't let the salt come out. Then you stop, they're gonna be following the whole thing. It'd be nice.
All right, we're all set on town garage?
Road signs, we don't need any road.
You got any other repairs or anything you need there?
Yeah, I gotta work around them doors and they're getting moved, so they're bored, they're getting broke. You know, just another framework, I got one, I gotta put off, I got it all painted, I just haven't done it yet. It's cold in the north.
Yeah.
Nothing major in there.
Okay.
Got that money for uniforms?
Building doesn't.
Can you paint it on your building, garage?
Paint?
Yes, if it needs, you paint it.
The jets and stuff, they need it or?
Well, the front's all that, we ain't got a toll, I know.
Yeah, good.
And our back, well, they're all the windows and handle doors, that's bad.
Okay.
Actually, um, repairs and maintenance, just to bring it up, maybe you guys talk to somebody on maybe some different lights out there.
Yeah, I'm telling that quite a lot.
Them lights.
They have front seats on.
Them lights are, are, they're constant, they're either out or they're flickering.
Well, yeah, we have one, we just turn on a switch, we're gonna go home at night and we'll be on and turn it off in the morning.
Yeah, but then you might, you know, it's nice to have the magic eye, but. I noticed, well, last night I went for a automobile ride, the state grides down there, they got kinda lights in between each door, lights up everything real well. I don't know.
They got great lights and a solar now.
It's five thousand and nothing there?
We're thinking up.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it's always seems like a light issue up there too. Flickering.
LEDs.
But, I, ask, see what there is out there, but.
Cause we have changed them before and then we had a yellow one, one genuine over there.
Yeah.
Every time you look out the window, it's on a granddaughter part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember that.
I think there's still money enough there, it just.
Efficiency remark, change all your lights inside, right?
Holy salt.
Tony paid them, they paid, they paid.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, Tony might have something working down there, maybe you got.
Look at something maybe that would be different for you guys. Cause like the end there with the fuel tank, some of the.
Yeah.
You know?
Give me a flashlight.
So no ads or subtractions to the town garage, are happy with that number?
It'll work.
All right. Brings us down to other expenses? Three items. Taxes on the gravel pit, training. This is the main expense.
Probably sell some, uh, gravel to Coventry, they're looking for a new pit. Coventry's looking for a new pit.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are.
They got a pit right behind us.
They're looking for a new one. As of their last select board meeting, my brother went to it, they're looking for a new one.
They run out of battery.
They just barely started it a couple, three years ago.
Huh, maybe they sold it?
No.
Yeah, you don't sell gravel.
Well, the other one that they had was, it's all done, done out.
But the one right behind the town garage?
Yeah.
The new town garage, they got one up by our pit.
Talked to my brother last night, he said.
How do they gain access to it?
Oh, Hancock Hill.
Oh, yeah.
They put a road in there, I like, go to run it, it's a nice road and you can get in there.
When they break through, can we utilize that?
Yeah.
I had to get it, it'd be long way for us to go, yeah.
I'm just kidding.
He did ask one time, he could use our road.
Yeah, go through our road.
Through ours, he'd be right there on the back道, he did ask one time, something, something we discussed a lot, but. Never, never happened.
You don't stop, takes over ours.
All right, so we're all set on other expenses? Total highway? That's it for the highway, so we, we've only got a couple of corrections and we're, we're done.
Yeah, I'll make those corrections and we can have it at the next meeting.
Yep. Our next budget meeting is scheduled for what day?
We haven't scheduled it yet.
Okay, move on.
Yeah, we might not need one. We might just do it at the time to find a warning.
You been doing all week?
No.
Yep, I'm good.
The wish list?
Nothing.
They just gotta grade it.
I know.
We gotta have a new truck. All right, we're trying, we're staying ahead of things.
Well, the only issue, I think we could trade that new truck for a. It's going good these days, so.
I'm gonna keep.
We'll let you have your way next time.
Oh, that, I'm telling you, I, I told you, I see that salesman.
So the clerks isn't coming, I, I.
Yeah.
No, I didn't tell him that. I told him, I said, you need to go talk to Fred.
Oh, you did, he came to you.
Yeah, you did tell him not to come.
I didn't tell him not to come, I said, you're, we would love to have you come, but I don't think he really wants to.
Yeah.
He was talking about, well, I was supposed to send a letter to the town clerk and this and that, he didn't even do that.
No, I told him about that. Yeah, give me a word, he was like.
The boy, he was looking at me, looking at me, when I got up, walked over, he says, I thought I knew you, he was really kinda quiet.
Yeah.
Um, if it stays okay now, we're fine, but if it starts that process again.
But I didn't do it a lot too much.
Well, what gets me is that our guys found the problem, not them.
Well, we're not.
Maybe, but they may have had, put a new boot in there with a better, you know.
Absolutely sure that.
Yeah, I know, I know.
It couldn't go either way.
And he'll say, we're the only ones having trouble and then you hear those other ones having the same issues and.
Yeah.
Who do you believe?
Well, you hear people seeing wreckers pulling town trucks.
You looked it up or something and there was throughout the country, these trucks, there was a lot of them with that same issue?
It weren't me, but I've heard that.
Yeah.
It was him.
Somebody was.
It was him, cause he go in our car.
Okay, someone told me.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty.
Right.
So many trucks out there, they had the same problem and it was going the same thing. He said, he told, he didn't care about down the country, he cared about our number one truck here.
He claims Craftsbury bought one the same time, hasn't had one issue.
It depends if you're using it or not.
That's true. Well, you can use it, you have to hold out a mile or other, you can start it and you got problems, you can't use it, you know? I put four, almost four thousand miles, take like, we fixed it here.
Good.
We show.
Yeah.
Well, we keep going.
Good. Excellent.
No disappointment there, we're doing what we got.
Okay, well, thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, the hot sun.
Do we need to keep like here for water sewer or?
No, we don't.
We're good?
Yeah.
All right, no, nothing for water and sewer, Mike?
Um, well. We still never put a fence on the.
Right.
Still interested in that?
Yes.
Okay, I'll work on it, get a guy, come talk to you at a board meeting.
Okay.
And there's a lot going on with the project, so.
Do you, do you think it should be fenced?
It wouldn't hurt to have gates, keep people out of there.
Right, I mean, that's, that's what I'm looking at, it's so close to Vance Hill.
If we just had something along the front.
Yeah, I, I drive by other reservoirs and most generally they're gated off.
Yeah, in the front.
Yeah.
I don't know if you necessarily need a complete fence, you can just stop them from driving in.
Yeah, well, I, I've been there all times of the day, you know, I've been there one, two in the morning a lot and there'd be somebody parked there sometimes like, what the hell, a lot of times it's just if somebody drops their rig off and ride to somebody else, but we don't really need that, no.
Yeah, I stopped one day and there was a kid on tops with a skateboard.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good thing.
I've been there on the video during the year, and I don't need to tell you, they get parked there, they get all determined, man, whatever, whatnot.
Yeah. But I think it should be at least the front and then.
Yeah. I'll get the guy here.
Okay.
Last time I called him, he never returned my calls.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
And we don't work on the budget for the town report or for town unit, because that's just.
The water and sewer budget is not loaded on it.
No.
No, no, no.
That's something that the water committee should be looking at. Give them something to do.
Sure.
Let's see the defense and stuff, so moving back to page one. Government salaries and compensation, here's where we work on raising or lowering our pay, first item.
I'm not doing it for the money.
I'm good.
I didn't do it for the fun.
I'm going with it too, no problem, so we'll leave that the way it is. Administrative assistant, that's, uh,
Avis?
Avis.
No, that's me, that's for being your secretary, to come to the meetings, take the minutes.
No, it's, it's like the board secretary is the third one now.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Oh, that's Avis.
Right, she's paid with.
Water and sewer. She pretty much volunteered her job.
Okay, and she's still happy with that?
Yes.
And do you think there should be a full-time second person in here or not?
Not at this point.
Okay. Very good.
A half-time person?
No, I don't think so, not at this point.
So board secretary salary is fine?
Yeah.
Okay. Town clerk and treasurer? What do we wanna do there? You, you're not part of that discussion.
Our other employees get a raise?
We have the money set aside in salaries for roads, we just proved that.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
To, and we will probably discuss something for salary increases.
But usually we do everybody when we do it, including.
That is correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
Right, but if you look at what we're budgeting here, we don't have any room to exceed.
No, I understand that, so that should, probably should be up, up to a little bit, I would say, yeah.
So do you wanna put in the minutes that if the budget passes, all full-time employees, that's how you usually do it? You put it in the budget, in the meeting minutes, say if the budget passes, all full-time employees get.
A certain percentage.
Yeah, okay.
That has to be in a formal motion or whatever.
Yep, I'll make that motion.
Hold on, second that motion.
All else in favor? What?
But you gotta give me a percentage.
Well, we don't know yet.
Yeah.
Not to exceed, not to exceed it.
But a lot can happen between now and then.
Exactly.
And I think we should just put a dollar figure in here and that if the budget passes, we will have that discussion relative to salary increases.
So what was your motion, Jerry?
To increase salaries, um, if the budget passes.
Based on budget passing.
Or, or have that discussion.
Not to exceed a certain percentage.
Right, but you're gonna need a dollar figure to go in there.
Last year, I think you put a two percent raise in there, that's how you did it?
I was, I was trying to get my calculator out here, but I can't.
You did a percentage. January.
That's two, that's, uh, for thousand four hundred and one percent. Two thousand dollars.
Got it right?
Yeah.
There's no way it's doing that. I was trying to do, trying to do that.
Take that times, you, you got a percent key on there.
Yeah, but I, every time I do that, it comes up that. So I don't, I'm not sure what, what is doing wrong, but.
You're out to eat, it says a tip.
I know.
So I want. C, clear.
Yeah.
Forty-one, one, two, three, times two percent.
Trying to see where you put that.
Did it come up that tip thing again?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't understand that, what?
Employee compensation right here, we get the, everywhere.
Let's go the other way, let's go.
I got it here somewhere, but it's.
Yeah, it doesn't make any difference.
Under utilities, calculator. I don't use this a lot, forty-one, one, two, three, times two. Eight hundred and five bucks a grand.
Oh. Okay.
For two percent on the town clerk and treasurer.
Cause you wanna put, Jerry made a motion to increase all full-time employees.
If budget passes.
Who seconded that?
Aubrey. Water falls up to camp.
Nice.
It's high on a sin to, I figured, two percent. Nothing more.
Yeah.
Do you wanna do that?
Sure.
You think that's fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good, so we need to add, uh, to the town clerk treasurer's line item, thousand dollars. And then assistant clerk and treasurer, that's Avis, that's our wire and sewer. Zoning and planning. Click, they only spent twenty-six, thirty-five is fine. Health officer.
Right, I put, in the past, we used to pay Maurice Sexton five hundred bucks a year. Now, we, we never had health officers before, I mean, and you guys, and you guys obviously don't get paid for that. But I didn't know if you wanted to put money in there, because now it's Steven.
Yeah, we should.
She's back to working again, so.
Steven?
No.
Anne?
Anne.
Yeah, but she's just part-time.
Yeah. Community medical.
Yeah, I, I think that's enough.
Yeah.
They do a good job at that, they do a good job.
They have been?
Oh, yes.
So they've gotten, the health officers gotten calls?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, cause they use the assistance of the fire chief in Newport, because he's been doing it a long time.
Alright, we get calls.
He's the health officer in Newport.
Right, and they wouldn't even come see us when we got there.
Yeah.
We did things a little differently, Jerry, we played with a lot of common sense.
Well, I know, I understand that. Or we tried, we tried.
When you get in the middle of landlord tenant.
No, I don't.
No, we didn't either.
We didn't, we came close.
Well, with the other one there, I called you one there, and the lawyer called me, said, yeah, you hold on a minute, I'm not making this decision alone.
Well, I believe I had three calls. I had three calls myself that ended up being in Newport.
Yeah.
When I asked them, where do you live, and they told me on certain, certain street in Newport, I said, then you, you've got the wrong number, I'm sorry.
They do that, it's eventually a night for dog calls.
Yes.
Mostly nights and weekends, the cops get it all mixed up, like, I'll get a call at six on Sunday morning.
Oh, that's because they can't find it.
That lawyer called me and that lady dreamed.
No, they get Newport Center and Newport City mixed up.
Well, the, the lady they called me and said, you need to come down here, right now. She said, I need to come there, she said, the bed bugs, it's the bad, they're on my husband's face, and I thought, I don't wanna go there. Come find out, it was in Newport.
Oh, okay, I'm so glad. Bring them home for dinner.
And then ballot clerks, I think, we don't have any special elections this year, so that's all there's about. Four reports, you know.
Do you, are you gonna, um, shop out the town reports, like, that guy stopped in?
Yeah, he hasn't been back this year.
Do we do anything on this salaries and compensation? I noticed last year, uh, social security was. Do we need to have that?
Yes, we do, I think.
Um, well, what happens is the listers, yeah, I should change that, cause the listers, uh, federal FICA tax go into that, yeah. I forgot to add the listers.
Where are we?
Right.
Benefits?
Uh, just, uh, FICA and Medicare, yeah.
Well, that's gotta go up.
I mean, that was up.
That doesn't go up.
The year before.
It does if you, if, if all the full-time employees get raises.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll change that, but I.
She has a.
Okay, okay, that's what I'm saying, it's gotta come up, at least the, the amount of percentage.
I forgot to add the listers in there, but I will.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Is Medicare with a new employee, is that enough, Denise?
This is only, uh, the roads, yeah, we did the roads already, this is just, uh, me and the listers.
Oh, okay.
And Steve Edwin. And Doug Lay, they get, they get a payroll.
They get, okay.
Well, you think that'll go up?
Well, I forgot why it was over budget, see, I just put what was last year, and then the actual is sixty-five hundred, but I forgot to include the lister's salary in my calculation there, so I'll change it.
Alright.
Yep. Yep.
Okay. And town meeting and elections, Denise says we're fine with that. Did the listers come forward with, uh?
Yep, they're happy with the same amount of money.
Oh, they are?
With the same, with the same budget, I should say.
Okay. Perfect.
We say they didn't spend all of what they had last year.
No, no, and they want it in the morning, that goes into the reappraisal, so it's just like last.
Yes, absolutely. Cause that's gonna be coming up here.
Well, we're still, our CLA is still like one oh eight, one oh nine.
Oh, really? Oh, okay, alright, when it gets down to one hundred, then.
Eighty.
Eighty, okay, eighty, eighty, okay.
When was the last time it got that low?
Two thousand nine.
So, look at the number of years we've been.
Yeah.
Listers are doing a good job.
Yeah.
Listers are doing a very good job.
Uh, uh, good.
This computer purchase, should we put money in there? There's always updates and stuff, seems all they need to come in, should we have a little money in?
The reason that, well, what that nineteen hundred is, is we have that disaster recovery thing with Nemrick. Um, in the event that our computers all crash, they come in and they.
Well, I was talking for the listers. They always have updates and stuff.
Yeah, they just got.
No, they, they're happy with what they, that's what they said, I asked them.
Their program is through the state, right?
Yeah, it's a camera program, we have to pay for that every year, that comes under other expenses.
But didn't they just get a new laptop or something?
Uh, two years ago.
Two years ago, okay.
Yeah, just asking.
Yep. And then the design, under operating expenses, that's where we put the disaster recovery thing, and then they back up every night. You leave your computer on, so you have a backup here, you have a backup offsite every single night.
Well, good.
Yeah, so that works out good.
Office supplies, postage, telephone. Coffee or expense, we just bought a coffee.
Yes, should be good for a while.
Why it's down there?
We got the service maintenance on that too, didn't we?
We have a service maintenance on the coffee.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, we got a new one last year.
Yes.
Yeah, the office supplies is high, I want to talk to you guys about that, I got a price to get new, we're gonna need new shelving in our vault.
Oh, yeah.
To put our landmark books.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to buy that this year, cause it, it's almost full, let a guy come in and give us a quote. Couple different ways that we can go, but that, that money should, the additional money should cover it.
Okay.
We can do it, Newport City has a, a floating one, it goes in front of the.
I've seen that.
Yeah, and then we can do an independent one, so he, he's come up with a couple of different, he came up, I haven't had two guys come up so far. They've looked at our vault and they're gonna kinda design a system, we can even, where we have all those shelves, where we keep all our permanent records, they can even put a row there.
It's on wheels and track and, and it slides back and forth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, so you can stack them right up tight to one another?
Yes.
It's a real slot.
Yeah, yeah, and if the budget passes, then we'll, he'll come up again and kind of finalize which is the best way to go, he took pictures of the vaults and all that.
Perfect.
That's why, that's why.
And our tax mapping guy, he's still?
Yeah.
Every year, what's, who does that?
Russell Graphics, Dean Russell?
Yeah.
Yeah, he comes up, he actually lives in Georgia now, he's moved there. But he comes up and does all the towns every year.
Good.
Yeah.
Dog expense?
That should be good.
We went over last year.
Yeah, by four bucks.
Yeah. Eighty-four cents too. But, I mean, it depends on the amount of calls you get.
That's right.
Yes.
Where's Gene Bissau on the Gatsby thirty-four implementation?
We, uh.
We had gotten.
Yeah.
Warned about that a number of times.
Yeah, we, we're, it's at a standstill at this point, they're not really mandating that.
Been years.
Liability insurance?
Yeah, we actually got a price from VLCT, it went down just a little bit.
Okay, I wondered why that was down, cause last year we budgeted it over, actual, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
We bid that, Denise bids that every year?
Yes.
Okay.
So, at a cer- at a certain time of the year, you call them and say.
Okay, we have to, because VLCT, if you don't warn them that you're putting it out for bid.
Yeah.
Then they.
Right.
Roll you in and that.
And then they jack the price.
That's it, right.
They did that one year twenty percent.
Yeah.
Alright, that brings us down to legal and CPA, seventy-one hundred is fine. Other expenses is fine.
Recycling.
Office furniture, we have that discussion all the time.
Yeah, that's down.
I stopped.
We're gonna do that this year.
Don't even ask. Just don't ask, just say no. Say no, she'll finally get it in, then she needs to buy it. Just say no, I fought it, fought it, and I'm done fighting.
We got new chairs.
Wait. Recycling, that's, uh.
Do you think that's high enough for recycling?
Yeah. That's fine. There's all kinds of things that are coming down the pike and nothing's definite yet, so.
Yeah.
Who knows? What, recycling, when it started out was a free service, it's now gonna cost ten thousand a year, it's free.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
As far as the cemetery, Chuck, again, he actually just came in today.
Oh.
He actually stopped in this morning, and he thinks twenty thousand on Route one hundred cemetery is good. Need a top to build. Keeping that in there for a few years till that cemetery gets up to smell. Right now, they've started, they did a wicked job this year, I don't know if you guys have been over.
No.
They did a wicked, wicked good job with what they've done, and now they've started working on the stones, repairing the stones, oh, we ran out of money, obviously, but the first place they're gonna start actually is, um, they're gonna do some on the Wright Cemetery, or what I'm calling, Snow Road.
Oh, that? That old cemetery over there?
Yeah.
That, nobody's using that now.
No, no, they haven't used it for years, but the, some of the stones are.
Right, well, it went by their, you know, hunting season and they're, they're like this, you know, some of them, so.
So do we need to up that first one, or just?
No.
Because that's for both cemeteries.
Yep, they thought that was fine.
So who's mowing, Lake Road, still, uh?
Still the Wheelers.
Wheelers?
Yep. And they do a great job over there.
Alright. And they're taking care of the Wright Cemetery too?
No, it ain't actually Wheelers, what is their name? His name?
Uh, Gene, Gene Wheeler? David Draper?
Draper, yeah, okay.
Just the same one that does your lawn here?
No, he does the Route one hundred cemetery, uh, but no.
Okay.
I think his bid will be different to sure.
Uh, it might be, you had to hire somebody, right?
He did a real good job though.
He did an excellent job.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I have any problem with what he did.
He did an excellent job. Not that the others, not that the others didn't do an excellent job.
Right, yeah, but he did it last.
Oh, wow, wow.
Yeah. Alright, what do we have to do now? Town clerk's office?
Uh, yeah, electricity and heat should stay about the same.
It's a good thing, they haven't increased it any.
No, the solar pianos cover some of it.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then repairs and maintenance, that's where the furniture comes in, for any repairs. I still would like to work on getting a sign for out front, I've been, I've discussed that numerous times with Fred as to we've got a sign kinda like Derby has, or the school has down there. Where the best placement would be for that, you know, you can't put it up by the building, it has to be by the sidewalk. So, we're, we're kinda working on that, like something cemented in the ground, like the school did. I just gotta talk to Derby about theirs, they've got, uh, one, you know, you can change the letters in there, it's got kind of a blast there.
Put the seasonal Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Yeah, or like, um, well, not so much that, as like, you know, a reminder that taxes are due, dog licenses are due, elections.
Right, right.
So, it probably, he's got a concern, it's gonna be where he pushes the snow.
Yeah, you know, and if we put it down here, we, you know, we thought about by the fire hydrant, might be a good spot.
Uh, you don't wanna interfere with the fire hydrant though, you don't want it close enough so that the guys.
Well, no, no, but on that.
However, that fire hydrant's dead.
Yeah.
All our fire hydrants in this town are dead, okay.
So we're just, we're still batting that around, um, Oscar Roberts actually got us a price, it's like a couple thousand bucks for one of those.
You just wanna do location, where, where is it gonna be?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Would it?
So how's that gonna materialize? We should do it, so I think that's a good idea.
We said that, we talked about that before, and said it was a good idea.
Yeah.
Derby's is just straight to the road, right?
No.
Yes, yeah, like this, yeah.
But wouldn't it be if we had a little V shape, but then you'd have to?
Then you have to, well, theirs is like straight to the road and they do both sides.
You do both sides, right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if the road's this way here, then, then the sign is like this on, on the side of the road, so they can see it from both sides.
Right, whereas our school only has one, to come and into town, just have it on one side, I'd rather have it on both sides.
Yeah.
You know, for people coming in. You know, for people coming in.
Yeah, well, there's enough traffic on Van Hill, you know, you can see it both side, both ways.
Are you gonna sell Disney tickets too?
No, they don't sell Disney tickets, they sell Great Escape tickets and we used to do that, we didn't get a lot, Newport City does it. We didn't get a lot of people.
You used to do that here?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Was there a big discount on if you sell, was it?
God, I can't remember, that was years ago.
Yeah.
I don't know. Never, I never remember that.
Yeah.
I never utilized that service.
Yeah, we used to do it, when I first came here, we did it for a couple of years, but not a lot of people came in.
So.
And then the groundskeeper, we.
Well, you didn't put any money in for the the sign?
Five thousand.
Oh, that, okay, that's.
Repairs and maintenance.
That's gonna come under that, okay, well, that and furniture is gonna come out of that?
Yeah, Jerry's.
We're not getting any furniture.
We're not getting any.
Our furniture's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know we're not. So let me ask this question, then, how are you going to make sure that it happens? No, I'm not, I'm not even gonna try anymore.
Oh, you're done?
I'm done.
Oh, all right.
I got a guy's name.
That way it may happen. I'm done.
You got a guy's name?
Done pushing it.
Then you get it through the prison?
Yeah, that's not cheap.
They do for good furniture.
They do very good furniture. But it's not cheap.
No.
They, you pay for that.
Oh, I know.
That's, they keep them boys busy.
Yeah.
Do they custom stuff or do they get just like a catalog?
Oh, no, they build it right there.
No, they have custom, custom.
Yeah, they have, you can go online actually.
Custom built.
Yeah. So you can pick what you want.
Pick anything you want, any size you want.
Yes, and they build it to to dimensions you want.
Yeah.
I almost think the guy comes around, cause it's uh, uh, Carbonel, Mike.
Is he like on on leave from the facility? Like he has a furlough or something where they let him?
No, he's a guy.
He's a guy. He he works with the shop, yeah, yeah, okay.
And then the groundskeeper, I think forty three hundred is enough.
Okay.
And then the only other thing, voted articles, all of that stuff is voted at town meetings, on the warning except for the cemetery flags, that becomes part of that. So we always put in three hundred, like last year, we had just a little bit over, they had a, they had to get a bunch of new flags, what they do is. They pick those up, usually in the fall, they pick them up and try to reuse them for a few years.
So all these other voted articles.
Uh, in the warning separately.
No, yeah.
Nothing comes out of our general fund.
They're all papers out here, right?
Yeah, except for the ones that are.
Yeah, well, the fire department does have, doesn't have to have one because it's a.
Right, and I told him when we're gonna sign the warning, so he's gonna, everybody needs to get their stuff in by then, so.
Right.
So did uh, uh, museum, um, library in Newport, did they come up with an increase or you don't know yet?
Not yet, no, she hasn't gotten any of her stuff yet.
Okay.
Why, why is that a voted item that we own that, so I mean, what?
Yeah, so we have to put money. The library.
Right.
Building belongs to Newport Town.
Yes.
So we fund that because it is ours.
Right, I, that's why I wanted to know, why was it in in under voting articles?
Everything has to be voted at town meeting, whether it's in the general fund budget or a separate warning.
Okay.
We could include that into our budget.
Well, that that's what, that's what I'm getting at, I mean, we're not giving up that that. Library, it's just.
Right, it's just that we need to, I like to, I think Jerry does, to inform the public that it costs you this much for the fire department.
Yeah, oh, okay, okay.
Costs you this much for your library.
I see.
People gotta know how much it costs for each thing, right?
Okay, all right, well.
And the the library cannot be, if it was to be sold in the deed, um, the Goodrich when he left it to the town.
Right.
I think I was part of to the city being incorporated.
I think so, yeah, yeah, a long time ago.
That if they, if the library becomes defunct, then it goes back to the board of directors, but you're a member of it, right? And then they sell it to, and I don't know what happens to the proceeds, it doesn't go to the town.
No.
No. It just goes somewhere to do something, so. You know, the city's got an interest in it because it's around Main Street.
Yeah, Jim Johnson's on the board too.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
That's a beautiful life there.
Oh, it is, fantastic.
So, I mean, it's worth keeping.
Oh, I agree a hundred percent.
And it it is a sore subject for the.
I know, I know, I know it is.
I sit across the table from Jim. And it just, so anyway, but.
Okay.
They have a copy of the deed and we have a copy of the deed. So that ends that.
Okay.
And I believe it's done.
Sounds like a plan.
Revenue, we don't uh. Anything else is, we don't, where's revenue, the bank?
Yeah, yeah.
Water and sewer, the the water board, I think, should be involved with that budget. I agree.
Yeah.
I will inform Becky of that. They could be looking at that. Yep, they met last night and they took a good newsletter.
Oh, good, good.
I gave them a copy of the uh, minutes and from the last meeting we had with the engineers and the uh. To pay the bills.
Yeah.
We discussed it, select board meeting. US, they went to USDA, they, did it come back from them? For the water, bill bills for the new project? The twenty two thousand, it was.
I know, we're you, we gotta use our money before the grant money kicks in.
Right, right.
The two hundred eighty three thousand.
But the USDA did sign it and it left here at that meeting and it was, we signed everything and then it had to go to USDA for them to sign it and then it was coming back to get paid.
Yeah, we paid SciCar, um. Yeah, we've already sent the check out, USDA just has to keep, they keep a rolling total of it, Jason Booth from Aldridge and Elliot sent it to me.
He does that, okay, I just went making sure that USDA knows what's being expensed out.
Aldridge and Elliot take care of that.
Okay.
So when we use up our our percentage of it, then the USDA grant kicks in? Okay, that's what I thought.
We have to use our money for it.
Yes, yeah.
That's it?
Perfect.
I don't see anything more, so.
So maybe, looking at the calendar, so we probably can finalize the budget and sign a warning all at the same time.
As long as there's not any major changes that we can see, we can foresee coming out, I mean.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
So the first, let me look at the date, the first day that we can sign a warning. Okay, so the first day that we can sign a warning, I'll bring this calendar in, is the tw- January twenty fifth, the school's finalizing their budget. On the seventeenth, so. They're gonna have all of their warning articles done that week.
On the seventeenth?
Yeah. So the first day that we can sign the warning is January twenty fifth.
That one you wanna do it?
No, because I'm gonna be gone a couple of days, the twenty second and twenty third. So what about the twenty ninth, Monday?
That gives people.
Just where I'm gonna be.
Yeah, well, we probably should do that in the evening.
Oh, okay.
I would say.
Okay.
Just in case, I, the school board doesn't generally come, but Sarah, the chair of the school board works.
Five thirty? Is that all right? On the Monday, the twenty ninth, five thirty?
That's not gonna take too awful long, right?
No, they're just kinda go through it and sign it.
But while you gotta have all the warnings, the, I'll I'll try to get you guys the warning before and then you guys can make any changes to the warning, the school will have all their stuff in. The deadline for people to have their petitions in, I wanna say is. The twenty, twenty second maybe?
Okay, yeah, so everything will be.
Yeah.
And then on the twenty fifth is the last day that anybody can get anything.
The twenty fifth is the first day that you can sign.
Oh, first day you can sign a warning.
Yeah, first day you can sign, forty days before town meeting.
All right. I mean, and it can't wait, if we're doing it on the twenty ninth, I mean, it can't wait until the following or or the Thursday, that Thursday. Select board meeting, which is the first.
No, we usually kinda like to do, well, it's up to you guys, you're in charge of the warning, but we kinda like to do that at a whole separate meeting.
Okay.
To finalize the budget and to go over just.
We won't, probably won't have the select board meeting on the first.
Till the following week.
Eight.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, it's it's, so, that's why I say, cause it was so close, I didn't know, I mean, I don't care if it's on the first, it's making a difference to me, but.
Right.
So, okay.
Okay, so Tuesday, Wednesday, that, yeah. And then I'll let the, on the seventeenth, I'll let the school board know, in case they wanna come.
Yep.
Good.
Sounds like a plan.
All right, so our next meeting is the twenty ninth at five thirty. The next slug board meeting is February eighth at five thirty. Good.
I'll have to warn that, I'll have to put an ad in the paper for that, it's not gonna be the first Thursday.
Right.
Yeah, our office is in progress too, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, no, Barry wanted to be added to the agenda, remember?
Yeah, um. Final thought on the ambulance contract, I've thought about it deeply and no threats involved, I mean. I I truly believe there is a conflict of uh. It is a conflict, but I don't wanna get into that, you know?
No.
I'll explain.
You need, if you have a conflict of interest that you wanna bring before the sport, you need to do that.
No, I'm not gonna bring it up, I got another idea, I'm a businessman, here's what I think, I'd like to resolve this, now, here is the thing. It's about benefits, who benefits from all this money?
Town.
Okay.
Service to the community.
The people in town.
Yeah, I know, I know, but monetarily wise, by the way, before I go any further, can I answer your question you asked me about on the last meeting, you said. Who's gonna pay for these hundred and two service calls, you asked me that, right?
I don't remember.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, the fact is, and and the two owners even confirmed this, they bill.
Two owners of what?
Oh, wha- whatever, administrators of the ambulance company at the last meeting.
Okay, the ones that presented the.
Yeah, right, I don't know what they call it.
One's the executive director.
Yeah.
And the other one's the chair of the ambulance board.
Okay, I'll just call it, keep it simple, the administration.
They are a nonprofit, private entity.
Well, there's nothing to do with what I'm gonna say. So anyway, every ambulance call is billed and they're paid in in one of three or four ways. They come out and you, they uh, go over to Chris's house or something, right? If he has full insurance, they bill his insurance company for whatever the charge is, I'm guessing seven hundred bucks around there. If Chris has um, Medicaid, it's paid in full, basically. The uh, if he has Medicare, that's another story, there's a twenty percent deductible. The ambulance company bills Medicare and then they bill Chris for the twenty percent that Medicare didn't pay. And then the last, and then there's private insurance, whatever they pay and there's a deductible. And then the last and final is if somebody has no insurance, they bill them for the attire amount, amount. So I just don't want anyone to be confused like that forty five thousand dollars doesn't go towards the service calls, and he confirmed that as well. So here's my, here's my thing, the people that benefit, he said monetarily wise, is she's gonna give a raise to all the employees and I know that. You're associated with some family in there that works there, so, you know.
Who's associated with that?
Huh?
Who's associated?
Isn't his wife a secretary at the ambulance company?
Where he's going with the conflict of interest thing.
I know where he's going with it.
Okay, my wife.
I wanted to say it.
And for dis- I did too, but he won't because, but for disclosure, my wife is on the ambulance board.
The board.
The board.
The board, nothing to do with the running.
She's not an employee, she is a secretary of the board.
And she doesn't get paid.
She gets an annual stipend.
Okay.
Like the treasurer does.
Yeah.
And like two of the board members from each town. Just like we do. Coventry has a representative, Newport City has a representative.
So so let's, let's bring this all out into the open, are you gonna profit if we go with Newport Ambulance? Are you personally gonna profit from this?
Goes into his household income, but that's not the issue.
No, 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 it does not go into his household income.
Will she give it to charity?
What, what she gets.
This is not the issue, we don't really have here to discuss this.
The board.
Yeah.
Is exactly the same as what.
We get.
We get from the board.
Okay.
It it, does he profit personally from this? No.
The way the law is written.
My wife puts in hours and time.
You can read the law, I mean, if.
And she gets a cell.
The law says, that the law is written, it said anyone who, anyone who's involved can't, you know, sort of.
See, this, this sounds better when he just throws out, there's a conflict of interest.
Yeah, right.
And I'm not gonna discuss it.
Right, I know.
That's.
Okay, uh, the board, the select board does not vote on the ambulance.
They do not, that is correct. I have one vote.
The townspeople vote on that.
You have one vote, that is correct. Town votes on whether or not it gets there, not us.
It would become a conflict of interest according to the law, I do believe.
That's, that's why it's put on the warning.
Correct.
Okay, understood.
If there's a conflict of interest, according to Jim Condos, that it needs to be brought front and center.
Yes.
So that can be addressed.
Yes.
Not throw out, there's a conflict, but I don't wanna discuss it.
Right, I agree.
I will publish what Jenny Prosser wrote about this, legal references on my website and you can read it. But that's not where I'm going, you just wanted that, I will publish it, and I don't, I used to have the email, I could send it to you, but.
Publishing it doesn't bring it out.
Well, it's, it clarifies the laws, that's what we're talking about here, but I, you know, I don't.
Yeah, we talked to the Secretary of State's office as well and and it would become Steve, for um. An even line in the sand, if you guys voted on the ambulance budget.
Correct.
Steve would.
Abstain.
Indirectly.
From voting.
Yes.
Being that it's the voters that vote on it, it becomes a whole conflict.
I read that, I understand it.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that's not my issue, my issue is, I'm just saying.
They might just say that at the beginning.
Yeah, the the ma- my main point, rather, I'm saying, who benefits, okay, so there's money going, uh, he said he's gonna make, give a raise to all the employees, that's what he said. With the part of the money, right, and so uh.
My wife is not an employee.
Well, I don't know, I I looked it up online, said she was a secretary, I don't care, you know.
Of the board.
What, it's, it's, it's all the same, your, your involvement.
Barry, it's not all the same. You, you, you wrap things up into a general thing that looks like there may be a conflict of interest, be specific.
Okay, the law is specific, it has a list of associated people, a list, I don't have it here, I'll give you and read it, but I'm not gonna. I'm not gonna file a complaint for, I am, I am gonna try to do it like a businessman, here's my thing. Okay, so uh, we, let's get past that, the next thing is, what the people get in this town is they get an ambulance, they they get their their taxes increased because. Let's face it, forty five thousand dollars has been increased to taxes, and then if they get an ambulance coming there, uh. It gets, they get billed for the deductible, and all in all, you still get ambulance service whether we do this contract or not, so the people are getting not much. So I'm saying, here's what I suggest, what I'd like to do is tell the uh, suggest to the uh, the company there. Instead of just a thank you for forty five thousand dollars, and by the way, I, a rough figure, they made another eighty thousand, so they made over a hundred thousand last year. On the contract, uh, from the uh, the, the um, the service contract was thirty six thousand. And approximately, if they charge seven hundred bucks per ambulance ride, there's another seventy or eighty thousand, I don't know what they exactly charged, so they made that, they made over a hundred grand. And you, you know, they do have in their contract that you can ask them for any, any, any papers and they will give it to you and they say if they, I don't give it to you. You can consider this a breach of contract, it's on there, I should have brought it, you got, you've seen that, okay.
We've read the contract.
Okay, right, right, I was just, you know, we got people here, listen, so I'm trying to, you know, like, so here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to ask them, in appreciation for the townspeople, to do something for the town. And if they did that, I would back off, I'd leave the whole thing alone and I'd give them support. Because I plan on, you know, bringing those facts to the town meeting, I won't do it, so here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to have them create an event, one event during the year, during the summer, for the people, in appreciation. And here's what I'd like to do, I'd like to have a um, a fall festival in August and let them foot the bill, give us, give us something. They already made a hundred thousand last year, they're gonna make over a hundred thousand this year, give us twenty five hundred bucks for an event. That's what we'll do on, you know, I mean, I would, I I I'm a presenter, I would do it, I'm not gonna make any money, cause I think twenty five hundred would go, you know, musicians get two bands. Get, you need a stage and a sound man and I would orchestrate the whole things and would have something for the town, let them give a little to the town instead of. All they're given, they're promising, well, maybe we won't ask you so much next year.
Have you presented this to them?
Well, yes, I've presented to them, and I am gonna present this.
What's their response back to you?
I, I haven't done it yet, it's just, it's pencil and paper, so what I'm, I'm gonna do is, and there's one more thing I need to ask of Denise out of this. So I'm gonna submit that to them, I know it's a little bold, but it, you know, I'm a businessman, if she knows I'm gonna give them support. It might help a little on the town meeting, town meeting and votes everything in anyway, but there's a remote chance that people start thinking. Forty five thousand bucks is a big number and I still gotta pay for the ambulance if I don't have full insurance, you know, and they're making a hundred and twenty thousand, if everyone hears that, they. They might not vote it in, but if they hear that they're gonna get something, in appreciation, event, a fall festival in, in August, two bands, food. Have them come up and give rides on the uh.
I remember this festival thing.
Yeah, yeah, brought that up before.
Right, that you wanted us to foot something like that and it just never materialized in the budget and then you said to us, whether we do it or not here. You were going to do it.
Yeah, well, I.
Then you talked about going to Derby Line and renting the, the opera house, so where are we with that?
Well, I'm getting drifted, you guys won't vote it in, so I'd rather, in instead, let's get the money from the uh, the ambulance company, a little, let, let them kick back a little for the. Appreciation of of this enormous contract they have, you know, and why not, so I'm gonna subject that to them, if you wanna talk about something like that, and the town will fund it. I would, I would love to do it, but you know, it's a lot of work on top of that, you know, I mean, I'm putting a lot of work and I'm not gonna make any money, if I do this. I I'll play, I'll, I'll get a fi- I'll get, I'll get bands from Boston and and Burlington, high end, none of the, you know, like, not a Mark Shelton, I mean, no offense against them, but he's. He's sort of like a potty band, I mean, this, these will be serious bands, serious music, and it would be, and anyway, so if we do that. I do that, it might work and and if.
I think that's a conflict of interest on your part.
No, no, it's not.
Because you're personally going to get your name out there.
Oh, my name, my name is out there, I don't need my name around here.
Well, my thing, it might do, it appears that that.
I think he's promoting himself.
That is, and that sounds like that.
Yes, it does.
I'm not promoting myself.[1703.24]
Well, you said you're going to do this.
Yeah, as a presenter, a presenter is a large amount of work. You have to organize, you have to organize, book people, bands, it's a big job. And it takes, it'll take, uh, fifty, sixty hours of time. Is that, I mean, that's, it's all work. I mean, nothing is done for this town, there's nothing. Look at the Christmas tree lights. I mean, why don't we, uh, you know, it would be nice to do something for the town they could look forward, it would be for the children, having rides up and down. Vance Hill in the, uh, in the ambulances, it'll be for everyone to go out and hear a couple of bands, it'd be food there, uh, and an event. Every other town has events like that, so I'm saying.
Would you like to get on the ambulance board?
No.
Agenda?
Thank, uh, no.
Bring this to, to them?
No, I'm gonna write him a letter. I, I, oh, maybe, maybe, you wanna put me on there?
No, I would contact Mike Parity and Charlie Prono, the chair of the board, and have, tell them that you're interested in discussing a some promotional thing with them. And they can get you on the board and you can go visit them. It's not a decision that's gonna happen here, I don't.
I am not asking you for anything. I am just.
That's something he needs to do, okay.
I am gonna do it. Oh, you mean, uh, the board? No, if you wanted to do it, I'd, 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 I'd attend it. I'm not, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send him a proposal.
Good.
A written proposal.
After you get that done and he responds to it, let us know.
Yeah, of course, of course, I'm gonna, if he, he denies it, I'm gonna bring it to the people, I'm gonna let every, everyone know this is what I did, you know, and deny it and then I will, I will actively, um, go against his, his, uh, warning. That's all I can do.
You're going against it now?
No, not. Right now, I'm, I'm at the proposal stage. I'm not going against it. And, and finally, one thing, uh, in his contract, he says you can get anything. Ernest wanted this stuff. I asked you Denise, if you might ask them for what he wanted, he wanted the addresses of all the, um, a- all the, um, service calls, and he also wants to know whether, whether each of them was either an emergency or a routine call.
Can't get that, that's a HIPAA violation. You can't get it. Where the ambulance went to?
That didn't, somebody told, said that, stated that at the last meeting.
No.
Said you can get the addresses, but you can't get the names.
Absolutely not. That's a HIPAA violation, you can't.
A what violation?
HIPAA. If the ambulance comes to my house, you don't have a right to know it.
That's correct.
Okay, then the number of service calls.
That's in the town report.
Hundred and two.
Yep.
Hundred and two.
Hundred and two.
They have an, the ambulance puts in the, uh, in our town report, the number of calls.
Okay.
They don't say where they went though.
Well, you know, I heard that, I heard that.
The way they can.
I, I heard that at the last meeting, that's the only reason. It's on the video.
You didn't hear that, that you could get the names because.
No, not the names, the addresses. Somebody said, you can't get the names, but if you don't want, if you can't do it.
That's a question I think that you would have to ask again, the ambulance, cause we don't have that here in our town.
No.
You never got a copy of the town report?
You were at the town meeting.
I know.
You went there without this?
I know, I, yeah, I, I don't say, I didn't save it, you know what I mean? I don't get it.
We have a town report.
Yeah, okay.
The documents that you're asking for are in here.
Yeah, what, what year is that?
Two thousand sixteen.
I'm interested in two thousand seventeen. I want two thousand.
We haven't got, created one yet.
I know, I know, I know.
And who'll be created for town meeting?
Right, right, right. So two thousand sixteen's not doing me any good. Anyway, that, that is what I'm gonna do and if you don't wanna honor, uh, his request, I think he deserves to get some documents. He wants, uh, you know, you know, from the town, I mean.
All he's gonna do, all he's gonna do is call him once and they'll give him what legally they can give him.
They may or may not. Alright, I'll tell you what, forget that. I'm not gonna do a letter in his.
We already get it. We got it last year. Denise is gonna get it this year, it'll be in this year's town report when it's printed.
Okay.
It will be in there, their report will be there.
Oh, yeah.
After our next meeting, she should have all that, she'll send it to the printer.
Okay, well.
By the end of February, you'll be getting a report.
Okay, good enough. Forget that. I mean, I'm not gonna do it for Ernest anyway, he should do it himself, but I would be interested too in any information that we can get beyond just numbers. I mean, you're only allowed to just get numbers? That's my thing.
That's all you can get.
Town meeting is about numbers. Everything is, is a number.
There are more details, but I, I was informed by the Secretary of State, and this will end this conversation, that, uh, Denise can ask them for, for, uh, information, but she's not obligated in this situation because of, uh, the law states that, uh.
I think the law is specific in that it, that, uh, the recommendation was that if us, including Denise, are aware that someone in town may have the information that you need, we are to tell you that my wife is on the board of directors of Newport Ambulance and she is a resident of Newport Town.
I don't know, I don't get what that is relating to.
And if you need information from Newport Ambulance, you could go see her or you could go see the Newport Ambulance.
That's right, I could. And neither, and, and in neither case, uh, they are not obligated, they are not obligated under law to give it to me.
No, I'm not.
No, the, in Newport Ambulance doesn't, I can say I would like, but they are not obligated to give it to me.
That is correct.
They are obligated to give it to Denise, but she may want, she may not wanna do it, because in this case of Public Records Act, she doesn't have to do it. So I'm gonna not put myself at risk of, uh, rejection because I don't really give a shit, you know, as far as, uh, uh, Ernest goes. I just, I am, have just made it public that I'm gonna present them with, with a proposal in exchange for support of the Newport Ambulance. As opposed to, if they can't, uh, blow us a kiss for all the money they're making, then I oppose it because I think the people should get something, not just a tire tax bill and a bill. That's all they're getting. An ambulance service is guaranteed by the state, they're not doing us a favor. They are receiving the favor. An exclusive contract and a service fee of forty-five thousand dollars. Thank you for the, all the money you're making for the ambulance company. They're not doing us a favor. The favor is going to them. And forty-five thousand dollars plus approximately eighty thousand, if it's a hundred, is a hundred and twenty-five thousand is what they're getting. So show us some appreciation.
If, if we didn't have the Newport Ambulance.
It's still guaranteed by law.
Guaranteed by law. If we didn't have, if Newport Ambulance was the only show in town, we didn't have Mrs. Goy, we didn't have Derby Line, we didn't have anybody.
But we do.
Where, where would our ambulance come from? Burlington?
No.
Because we're guaranteed it, where would it come from?
There's one in Coventry, isn't there? An ambulance service?
No. By.
I saw it.
By the, the state nine-one-one. Each community needs to name an ambulance service.
Exactly.
But it doesn't need to be an ambulance service. I could name you Jerry.
Yeah.
So that when nine-one-one, when you pick up the phone, you dial nine-one-one, it rings Jerry Waterman's house, cause you're the one that the town has, now it's your responsibility.
So we have to designate.
To dispatch.
Yes.
An ambulance to that.
So we could say it, it's Burlington. So we're gonna wait for somebody from Burlington to come get it.
Well, there are, uh, according to the records, there are a hundred and eighty ambulance companies throughout the state.
My guess is Burlington's gonna say, yeah, we'll come get you, but we're gonna charge you so much each time we come.
It might be cheaper than forty-five thousand.
I highly doubt it.
Doubt it, yeah.
And, well, you know, I mean, that's neither here nor there, the, the possibility is that we are not, is he's not the only game in the world. There are other options for far cheaper. And he is, and it's on there, I'm not arguing that, but I'm saying, he's making a lot of money. Show us a bit of appreciation and do something for the people in this town. It happens all the time. We appreciate the business you have given you.